Call the meeting to order. All board members are present. Let's stand for the fledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
We don't have anyone for open forums, so I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any additions?
Um, well, just-
Or comments?
Couple comments. Uh, we have two retirees that have been around for about thirty years each. Roxanne Stenbeere retired about a week ago. She was in the lunchroom at Eagleview. And Janice Studer has been one of our technology people for over thirty years. Is retiring, and I think at the end of the year. So, uh, thank you for all the good work, and hopefully, uh, the Lord will keep them healthy and safe during their retirement.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed with seven zero. Committee reports. Policy.
We didn't have meetings until sometime in November, no?
Okay. Southwest Metro?
We had our meeting last Tuesday on the eighteenth, and, uh, we had a report from one of our leaders of a program, Mary Miller. We talked about, uh, care and treatment for students that have, uh, extreme mental issues. Uh, some of it is being done in the, uh, by the county assistance. And then also, we have a program at, uh, Southwest Metro that, um, involves, uh, students getting, uh, treatment during the day as well as their education. So, uh, it's a good program and, uh, one that is very needed. We do have an increase in students with, uh, mental issues. Uh, it's up eighty percent over what we've had in the past. Our ALC, we had a report on different programs, that's why I'm going through these. Uh, we had, uh, an ALC, uh, increase of students with special needs, with IEPs over other years. We have, uh, decrease in Level Four, uh, especially in the transition areas. We are seeing more students with multiple disabilities at Southwest Metro. It used to be that students would come in with maybe one, uh, qualifying disability, but it seems as though there are more students coming with multiple disabilities, uh, as the trend continues in that area. Uh, adult basic education, uh, the numbers for that program are a bit higher. The continuing education program is down a little bit. We are looking at increasing our participation in setting four point five. You know, officially, there is a, uh, Level Four setting, and, uh, then there's a Level Five setting, which is more or less residential. Uh, but we're looking at maybe putting something together at, uh, Southwest Metro that would help students that are not quite, uh, ready for residential treatment, but, uh, could benefit from a more involved, uh, type of, uh, program for their mental issues. Other than that, I think, uh, that was the gist of the program.
Thank you. CPAC?
We won't have our next meeting until about a month from now.
Okay, thank you. Community Ed?
Um, the, uh, event that we had earlier, uh, Kay Smith filled about, uh, almost half of the auditorium. A lot of elementary, uh, teachers and a lot of daycare, uh, supervisors were there. It was very successful. She was, uh, she was a very good speaker. Uh, November first should be when the, or around that time, should be when the next, brochure comes out. And, uh, one of the big events for the arts program, uh, in town is the Black Friday, which is right after Thanksgiving. And again, everybody's, uh, asked to come and have a good time, and a lot of young artists from town, uh, get a chance to get up on the stage, in addition to, uh, Little Chicago. That's it.
Thank you. Wellness Committee.
The committee met, um, they do meet after school, so I do have their minutes. They had a wellness interest survey last spring, and three points of interest that came out that were identified are, um, physical activity, uh, healthy eating, uh, stress management, and actually, there is a fourth, um, social and community volunteer opportunities. So those are the four points of interest that came out in the survey that was done last spring. Other items that they covered in the meeting, um, are a ship grant that, um, Scott County that they're looking to see availability for students and in the workplace. And they have, um, the committee has set up a super snack, which offers a healthy snack for staff, um, weekly. And there's been positive feedback for that. That's something that's been implemented. Also, uh, sit-to-stand workstation. So far, ten have been, um, offered, and for staff who spend a majority of the time, um, day sitting. So the stations are being utilized at this time, and there's been positive feedback for it. And then, um, their goals that they have, um, outlined are, they want to increase program awareness. And then they want to have all buildings participate in the, um, wellness initiatives, and then there will be meeting next, the next meeting is in February. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, early childhood.
We'll be meeting on, uh, November ninth.
Superintendent-
Madam Chairman, uh, I'd like to make this announcement. The three elementaries are collecting pop tabs. Uh, there's no competition, they're just collecting for the St. Paul. Also, if anybody in the, uh, human area, uh, has a lot of pop tabs that they want to get rid of, bring them to any of the three, uh, elementaries.
All right, thank you. Superintendent Report.
Yes, um, first of all, construction, uh, still going at a good pace right now, slightly ahead of schedule, so, uh, there's still hope, uh, that we'll be able to do the sixth grade transition from the CEC to the middle school in late December, but, you know, you never know what happens. But we're pretty much out of the woods with the, uh, weather factoring and the things right now, so we'll keep you abreast of that. So that's, uh, a positive, and obviously, if anyone drives by, uh, you know, the schools, it's amazing, the work that's been done. Um, right now, they're, you know, they're digging the pool right now on the inside and working on that, and, and then at the district office, um, uh, every week, uh, there's changes in there, and, you know, hopefully, it'll be by the end of December, they'll have that done too. As you know, we're, it's just, all this work is done in phases, but it's been, uh, going very well. Been going around, um, I speak, uh, make presentations to, at all the buildings, um, once in the fall and once in the spring every year, and so, going around right now, and you're gonna get this enrollment report tonight, uh, by Sandy, but it's one of the things I go over. I also give a construction update and a few other things, and it's gone very well, and enjoyed, uh, talking to the staff. I will say this, just 'cause we talked about it last time, but, uh, the calendar, we talked about the calendar, I did a straw poll, uh, of Eagleview's staff, and it was, uh, whether to go with, uh, Tuesday after Labor Day going up to the first Friday in June, and then comparing that to similar calendars we did this year, and was, uh, I think like forty-five to zero. They want, uh, same, same calendar, so, uh, like I said, we didn't do it online, it was, uh, just a show of hands type of thing, so I thought that was interesting. Fall sports are finishing up right now, boys and girls soccer, uh, girls tennis. Jenna Lambrecht, I should mention, finished fourth in individual tennis, so it was a, uh, highlight for the tennis, they had a good year there too. I don't know if you saw in the paper, but, uh, girls swimming and dive had their last home meet, and, and we, again, we wanna thank, uh, TCU, uh, for allowing us to be using their pool for the last several years, I don't know how many years it's been, but we're very grateful for that, and I know, uh, the team, the coaches, the parents of the swimming and diving, uh, program are just very, very excited, uh, for our new Aquatics Center, our new pool, to get started there. And like, we got, we got cross-country going in the sections here, um, and then football plays tomorrow night, and swimming and diving will be having their sections in the next week or so, so it's all finishing up. In fact, we started our first winter activity today, uh, dance team had their first practice today, and, uh, obviously, kids that are in the musical, been practicing for some time too. We got the music man coming up here, uh, in a, what, is it about three weeks, four weeks coming up here? So, things are going, uh, rapidly, and we'll be starting, uh, our winter sports here too. Um, the other thing I just wanna mention too is, you know, I try to be in the buildings, you know, in all the buildings at least twice a week, but, um, just talking to new staff and just observing myself, um, sometimes I think we take for granted what a great learning environment, uh, that's provided, you know, starting with clean buildings, the custodial crew doing a great job, our technicians getting everything up and running, uh, with our teachers and support staff, a welcoming environment, and it just, if you walk around, I get that chance to walk around, stop at classrooms or just be in the hallways, and we've got, uh, a great learning environment, both at the elementary and secondary level, and I think we take that for granted sometimes, so. A big thank you to all of our staff for that. The last thing I have is, uh, today's Monday, October twenty-fourth. On Wednesday, October twenty-sixth, uh, I'll be at, uh, New Prague City Planning Commission. We need to get a conditional permit, uh, use permit changed for the parking. Of course, the, the old outdoor hockey wing, which is west of, uh, the CEC there, uh, that space there was probably for, for extra parking if we needed it, and that was in the permit, uh, about a hundred spaces, um, but we're, uh, we're looking to move tennis courts there, and then expanding the parking, um, around the bus garage, creating more parking there, and, uh, we'll be able to get, uh, I think ninety-eight spots, nine spots. So, we going through that, and just talking about the overall parking. Actually, with what we have going on, what will be going on at the middle school, the CEC, the lower and upper, we're actually gonna have more parking spaces and much more than we've had in the past. And, uh, and at, uh, permit two, we're gonna go no parking on the east side of First Avenue too. I think that'll be a positive for our neighbors there, so. Got that on Wednesday, and then that will go for final approval, hopefully, uh, to the city council of New Prague. So, just wanna keep you informed of that. That's all I got.
Thank you. These are action items, enrollment projections.
Good evening. I'd like to, um, present the five-year enrollment projections, um, to you tonight. Last, um, workshop meeting, we looked at the kindergarten projection numbers, and now I said I would follow up two weeks later with these. This is gonna be the basics basis for the revised budget for sixteen seventeen, I'll be presenting probably in November, as well as our five-year financial plan, which I'll be presenting in probably January. First of all, for our kindergarten, we had some discussions two weeks ago, and we did decide to use the four-year county average at the October tenth workshop meeting, and that is the one kind of that was in, in the middle, going down but not so severely. So here, I just tried to sum it up, um, in just a couple of charts here. Uh, the first two bars are thirteen fourteen, I'm just showing a little bit of history there with what I, what I projected for the year, where we ended up. So I have that for thirteen fourteen and fourteen fifteen, and then fifteen sixteen, we had projected four thousand fifty-three, we actually ended up at four thousand seventy-five, so that was positive. And then for sixteen seventeen, the preliminary budget that you approved, um, in June, had a, uh, student count of four thousand fifty-four. We currently are at four thousand one hundred and twenty-six, and per our current enrollment projections, I'm projecting we'll end up at four thousand one hundred and six, so we'll lose a few students yet this year. And then you can see the next five years based on, um, I, basically what I look at, I have a, uh, projection model that, that looks at seventeen different ways of projecting enrollment, and I look at the last several years to see what would have been the most accurate projection model, and then I take out any anomalies, and this basically is, is what it's showing right now. So we, we would be growing, but not growing, you know, not growing very fast, but, but slight growth. So these are ADMs, which are student counts. The next graph is APUs, which is what our revenue is based on, 'cause you can't have increasing student count, but decreasing revenue depending on where the, um, the students are. So you can see the thirteen fourteen, again, you see that big drop to fourteen fifteen, I think Sarah, our auditor, explained that last time, it's where they changed the way they, uh, calculated APUs. And then we see fourteen fifteen, how, uh, we ended up higher than what was projected. Sixteen seventeen, I would project that we'd end up at four thousand four hundred and ninety-five, and our budget was based on four thousand four hundred and thirty-three. So that's good news. And again, you see the next five years, um, increasing slightly. So the rate of growth, the last, um, five years, we've averaged one point four six percent increase, so the next five years, my projections would show a point three percent increase over the next five years. So it's very good news not to be dropping enrollment a lot, will depend on those kindergarten numbers that we, we'll see how they come in, um, every year, and, um, I say, I, I feel pretty confident in these numbers, and so does Tim. Any questions on those? Okay. And, yeah, then I just have one more graph there that shows the grade groupings, and that's, and that helps for, um, facility planning purposes, that we obviously already have our facilities, facility plan done, but I still like to show, uh, these groupings. Then we have information on open enrollment. This shows back to two thousand nine-ten, and, uh, the blue is the out, those are the district students we lose. The red, or, uh, is, uh, the in, and then the net is in the green. So you can see, back in nine-ten, we would gain, we gained a hundred and sixty-seven students, and in fifteen sixteen, we gained two hundred and seventy-five students. So very good news for open enrollment for our district.
Ed, I just wanna mention too, if you look back to two thousand nine-ten, and actually before that, um, we were well under two hundred back then, wait, as you can see, a hundred and sixty-seven was our net, and it's, it's jumped up and continually get better, and actually, two seventy-five right now is, uh, the second best net open enrollment, which is very good. There's many districts, obviously, too, that are in the negative, and, uh, you know, when you go per pupil, um, seven thousand two hundred, or whatever it is per pupil, it's, it's a lot of money.
It's gotta be hard to project those open enrollment at times, 'cause we could lose them all of a sudden too, or how you-
Right, well, we just, you know, to, to project enrollment, you look at, at the past, that's the only thing you can do, and so we just have to assume that these students will stay.
Yeah, we've always been pretty accurate, I guess, so.
Yeah, you know, we try to be, try to be on the low side. We don't wanna be high, we wanna be low, and, you know, last year being off twenty students, that really, really those twenty students, they were our tuition students to the co-op, so it's, yeah, we've been pretty accurate, so, hope that continues, but, um, you know you're gonna be wrong, you just don't know how wrong you're going to be. [laughing]
It's, I would say the other thing with open enrollment, I mean, you have, I think we have a lot of positive momentum going right now. We're not dealing with budget cuts, uh, we're able, you know, we're able to offer a comprehensive program, uh, class size is low, I mean, there's just so many positive things that, uh, districts, uh, when they get in cutting mode, that, that affects the in and out of open enrollment quite a bit, and you can get in a downward spiral too. So, I mean, we're gonna be very cautious of that, um, and then it, it just comes to, you know, it's positive that we're going up, but we just gotta keep our eye on the bottom line and make sure, uh, we're spending money wisely, and we keep a healthy fund balance, and, and all those things are just factors that go into open enrollment. But obviously, our reputation as a district is very good. I mean, people want to be here. It's not just open enrollment, uh, there, increased overall enrollment, uh, with our resident district, uh, people, people moving here because of the school district. So, it's positive.
And I have one more chart here that just, um, shows you for this year so far, it's early in sixteen seventeen, we have our first ADM reports out from MDE. You can see for just some key districts in the area here, uh, you can see the, and you can see history to the, the net, um, in and out for key districts. I look at TCU, Lakeville, Pirate Lake Savage, Jordan, Northfield, and Belt Plain, and Pirate Lake is the only one we're negative with, and that is, you know, been decreasing, so that's, that's a positive. So that's an interesting chart to look at as well. Okay, any other questions on that?
Thank you. Uh, next levy adjustments for twenty seventeen.
Yes, so, um, um, in September, at the board meeting, I presented the preliminary levy, and it was increasing more than normal, and so Tim and I have taken a look at the options we have to decrease our levy. Uh, it's very common for school districts to do this across the state, if they have large adjustments, um, so tonight, Tim and I are presenting our recommendations. If we recall, our, our current preliminary levy will show an increase of eight point oh three percent, and, um, there were several reasons for that. One was that large prior year adjustment regarding the transition to the adjusted pupil units that, uh, was incorrect calculation. Then we also had the aid levy mix calculation, was determined by formula, because our property values are increasing, the aid, state aid decreased and the levy increased. We also have increased enrollment, which obviously affects our levy, and we had a, a slight increase to our debt schedule that was planned, it's just our, you know, we don't, you don't have an even debt schedule, it goes up and down from year to year. So, Tim and I looked at different options to reduce the overall levy, to lower the impact to taxpayers, and it's very key, you only want to lower the levy in areas where state aid is not impacted. There are some levies that if you under levy, you also, you lose state aid, so it's like a double, a double whammy. Um, we also wanted to minimize the impact on needed district programming, obviously. So we are, um, Tim and I are recommending that we eliminate the following levies. Uh, we have some two thousand fifteen adjustments for sixty-four thousand, our student achievement levy, which is actually, this is the last year for that levy, of almost thirty-two thousand, the reemployment levy, which is an optional board levy, of ten thousand, and then the Southwest Metro Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Levy, there's no aid associated with this, there is with our Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Levy, but not with theirs, of almost sixteen thousand, so a total of a hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars, which would get our levy increase down to six point nine percent. So the estimated tax impact at a home valued at one eighty-seven-seven, uh, with no change in the prior, in the value from the prior year. Before these adjustments, it was, uh, sixty-two dollars a year, and after the adjustments, it would be fifty-two dollars per year, or a five point six percent increase. So any comments or questions on that? You won't be approving the final levy until December twelfth, and based on your feedback, I, we certainly could come back in November with, with, um, a different recommendation if you're not okay with this, but if you are okay with it, then we'd come back in December, and we'd, we'd just approve less than, uh, our potential levy.
I believe most years, we've been in that two to three percent increase, and this may be just one year where it would be higher, and just have to go with it, so I think I'm fine with the six point nine. Looks like they got that reasonably.
Yeah, and I, as long as it's not gonna impact areas that we needed the levy money for, and we're not losing state aid, I think it's, it's good to decrease it, and we'll be done with that, the error adjustment next year, so.
Yes.
It will, you know, I talk about next year, but projecting, it'll be going down?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't say for sure. I can't say for sure, just because this legislature starts meeting in January, and so you never know what they're going to do, and if our property values were to, you know, take a significant hike, that affects the aid levy adjustment. I can say for sure, though, that there won't be this large negative, you know, or this large positive, um, prior year adjustment, so that's only I can say for sure.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we need to approve an audit request for proposal.
Yes, our audit report was given the end of September, and we have had Clifton, Larson, and Allen, um, do our, our district audit for many years, I'm not sure how many, it's this six or seven I've been here, they've, they've done it, and I would guess it's probably a total of fifteen, seventeen years they've done our, our audit. There's a couple different reasons to go out for audit, or for, um, RFP, for audit services. One is just fiduciary nature. It's a good idea every once in a while, it is a fairly big expense, it's, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars, just to see, you know, what, what else is out there as far as price. Uh, we've also had a, we've also had a few service issues. Um, they've had quite a bit of turnover in their Mankato office, and, um, the last several audits have not been as organized as what I'd like to see, and, um, anyway, so I just think it's, I've, I've talked with our auditor, I talked with her last week, and she's, couldn't disagree with anything that I said, and, um, I just think it's time that we take a look at, look and see what else is out there. I have an RFQ, um, ready to send out on November first, and we'd ask for, uh, responses December first, and then I would, um, evaluate those proposals, um, bring some people in for meetings perhaps, uh, bring a recommendation back to the board and make a decision, uh, by the first part of February, so we can get our audit plan for the, 'cause it starts again in, you know, June, June-July timeframe. So I'm not saying that we are going to change, just because I don't know what's gonna, what's gonna come in, but I think it's, I think it's good to, just to take a look, see, and see what else is out there.
How many different auditors do school districts, you would tell me, are out there?
Yeah, there's seven or eight. Yep, and I know not everybody will bid on our business, you know, so for some, we might be too small of a district, for some, we might be too big as a district. They have little niches, but I will send it out to all the auditors that, um, that I'm aware of, and I would hope that we get, um, at least five to bid on our business.
I'd say this too, Sandy's been very upfront, has given honest feedback to the, uh, Larson Allen, who we've used the last, I don't know how many years it's been now, but, um, and I know our staff, led by Sandy, have been very prepared, and, um, I think they've been disappointed in themselves more than anything, 'cause they know, uh, the amount of work that Sandy and her staff have put in for the audit, so it's, I think it's the right thing to do, to see what's out there, and, and like Sandy says, it's a lot of money, and we just want to go better than it has in the past.
I think it's a good idea. Doesn't, doesn't hurt to see what's out there, and, um, what other firms would be interested in, uh, doing business with us and, and audit, so, I think it's a good, good idea.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the request for, uh, to the, look into a new auditor. RFP, RFP, I'm sorry.
I'll second motion.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
I guess you had to stay sitting there for a while.
Yes.
Next, we have the approval of a lease agreement with Faithpoint.
Yes, I updated you two weeks ago on the last minute change to this. Um, we had been looking at a different facility in town, but, um, that didn't work out, so now we're going to be going to Faithpoint. We actually moved our stuff in, um, over MEA, because that's when the, um, movers were available, and that was a good time for our staff to move, so we actually moved our stuff in there on Thursday, or Thursday, I think it was. So, this is the exact same basic lease that we have with New Day for our integrated learning program, and they have reviewed it, and I believe they've given a copy that is signed for us to sign tonight, so their board has looked at and signed it, and we'll just ask the, the same from you this evening.
What door are they coming in?
At, at Faithpoint.
It's the back door.
It's the back door, okay, yeah, I'm not sure, I've not been over there. And we did have it tested for mold, and it came back absolutely fine, so, 'cause there was a concern that a couple people raised about that, it came off just fine.
And security, it'll just be locked while they're in there?
Yes.
Do they have a buzzer system, or someone who's in there?
No, I'm not sure. You know, I'm not sure, and we only use it, we only have two classes there, Tuesday and Thursday morning, so it's not, you know, our main classroom near the high school. Um, they might be adding one more class after the first of the year, but as of now, there's only two half-day classes going on there.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement between Faithpoint, Lutheran Church, and Indian School District, seven-twenty one.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes seven-zero. Next, staffing changes in H R.
Yes, again, last, um, at the workshop, I, I propose, actually, we have the receptionist, receptionist position as well, um, when we move back, we have a, one entry into the C E C, and it will be a, um, controlled access, and so we need a receptionist sitting there, and the receptionists will, uh, not only do receptionist duties, but will have other duties as well as outlined in the attachment, um, some for community services, some for the business office, we'll also be doing some facility use, um, stuff for outside organizations when they use our facilities. And, um, that's one change, then the second change is in human resources, we have a longtime H R employee that's retiring at the end of the school year, and now is a good time to reevaluate how we're staffing H R, and Tim and I are proposing that we hire, um, the current, the, the current, the current H R coordinator is gonna be leaving, we'd hire an H R specialist to replace here, her, then we'd take our current H R assistant and have them become the receptionist, and then we'd hire an H R specialist to replace her, so we have two H R specialists, one for certified and one for non-certified. And, uh, we've talked to the principals about it, and they're really excited about the change as far as having one person to go to for certified and one for non-certified, and if you approve this tonight, I'll be actually posting the receptionist and one of the H R specialist positions, um, yet this week.
I'm in motion, we approve the staffing change in H R as presented at the last workshop, and, just right now.
Second. Second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes seven-zero. A USA Aquatics contract.
That is not me.
I think Janelle pretty well covered it at our last work session, um, I guess I was part of the joint powers, I think that would have been a nightmare for any one of us to try to work and schedule that whole, uh, thing with Aquatics Center, the scheduling and all that stuff, and we did interview Mr. Perel, he was down for over an hour, we talked to him, and, uh, Janelle did the background check on him, and, uh, it looks like he's well-qualified for this, so I think we should just go ahead and prove it.
Yeah, no, it's, just so you know, too, the city council discussed this, and they're behind, um, they're all very supportive of Mr. ...
And this person is gonna help set up the pool and work on the scheduling and give us recommendations on how best to run the facility, we have a lot of experience.
And help with the hiring of the pool manager, the pool coordinator, and just get everything up and running, uh, so it's ready to go on June fifteenth, so, I think this is, this is very much needed.
He will make sure the pool is being used at all times, basically, so...
And I, yeah, I think, and one of the things is bringing revenue, and making sure it's used, and he's got experience with that, and, you know, like he said at the, the meeting, at the joint powers meeting, um, that, uh, the way it's set up, the whole Aquatics Center is that, uh, we might lose a little bit of money in the first year, but you should not be losing money, you should be able to make money, so, you know, we're thinking, worst-case scenario, you know, losing thousands, you know, not thousands, but quite a bit of money, speaking, just to have it, a lot of, a lot of school districts do, but, I think with the features that we have in there, um, it's not just about the school district, it's about the whole communities, and it's from, it's got usage from toddler all the way to seniors, so I think, uh, what he sees on there is a real positive thing, but, he's got a lot of experience, he's the expert, so, very, very excited to be able to have him.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Duane Perel for the planning services for the opening of the Aquatics Center.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. Now we have a resolution to accept a donation from Caroline's Kids Foundation.
At this time, I'll consider a motion to, uh, look at the resolution to accept monetary donation from Caroline's Kids Foundation.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution, whereas the New Prague Area School Board of Education established a policy concerning the acceptance of gifts to the school district, whereas the school board may accept a gift valued at one thousand dollars or more, only by adoption of a resolution by two-thirds of its members, whereas Caroline's Kids Foundation wishes to donate eleven thousand dollars to the New Prague Area Schools under no conditions. How many vote on this? Don?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Yes, yes, item passes.
Thank you.
Can I ask where they're from? Where's Caroline, uh, Kids Foundation? Or exactly?
It's Caroline, Caroline Tamplats.
It's Caroline Tamplats. I think it's out of Wayzata, actually, it's, it's actually not in existence anymore, I think they've disbanded now, but they made some donations.
Good. And finally, we have an activity account contract to approve?
Yes, this relates to the activity account changes that we've been dealing with all year, and so, if it's, if it is a contract, it requires board approval, so, this is for prom, and they're going to the, uh, Wau Zone in Mankato this year, or next year.
Going where?
To the Wau Zone, in Mankato. It's like a bunch of activities and...
Oh, yeah, yeah, they've gone to the, all of America in the past.
Yeah.
So this is just for this year?
Yeah, they, every other year, I think sometimes they have it here, and then they go someplace else.
They go part ballroom the following.
Yeah, it was last year.
Yeah, yeah, so that's for this year.
Okay.
I get a motion to approve the counter.
I'll make a motion to approve, approve the activities contract.
I'll second the motion.
Someone will have to send Tim a link to the Wau Zone.
We'll have to go down there, huh?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.
We'll go down there. Any else?
No.
I'll make a motion to...
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.